Call the Wilmer City Council Meeting to order for Monday, September 17th. Rule call.
Mayor Calvin.
Here.
Councilmember Nelson.
Here.
Christensen.
Here.
Schwantes.
Here.
Alvarado.
Osmus.
Here.
Meske.
Here.
Plowman.
Here.
Fagerly.
Here.
Eight present, one absent.
Uh, City Administrator Hound is not with us this evening. Um, he is on a, uh, out of the office on in a family emergency. So he's not with us this evening. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Are there any post additions or deletions to the agenda?
Mayor Calvin.
I have Councilmember Nelson.
If you're, could, there's four to add from the work session. Is that what you're doing?
Correct. The Wilmer Noon Lions Water Fountain Donation, the Wilmer Municipal Utilities Proposed Budget Presentation, the Recreation Coordinator Job Description and Authorization to Fill Two Positions, and the State Aid variance request for Highway 12 East Trail Projects. In the absence of those four items, anything else to come before the council? Seeing and hearing none, I'll take a motion to approve as amended.
Motion.
Motion made and seconded to approve the agenda as amended. Discussion. Seeing and hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Next are the consent agenda items. Ms. Thompson.
On tonight's consent agenda, we have for council's approval, the city council meeting minutes of September 4th, Caris Health Rice Memorial Hospital Board Minutes of September 5th, Wilmer Municipal Utilities Board Minutes of September 10th, application for exempt permit for the Church of St. Mary, application for exempt permit for the Wilmer Junior Golf Foundation Incorporated, a state temporary liquor permit for Foxhole Brew House Incorporated, and for council's acceptance, the building report for the month of August 2018, and the accounts payable August 30th through September 12th, 2018. Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Discussion. Rule call.
Councilmember Nelson.
Aye.
Christensen.
Aye.
Schwantes.
Aye.
Osmus.
Here.
Meske.
Aye.
Plowman.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Seven ayes, zero nays.
That motion passed. Next, we have the open forum. First on the open forum is James Venegay. How we do this is you have three minutes to address the council. Should be on something that is on the, uh, agenda, uh, and again, should not be used for political comments. Uh, Mr. Venegay. State your name and whether you reside in the city of Wilmer or outside of the city.
James Venegay. I do reside in the city of Wilmer. Am I ready to go? All right. First time I've done this. Um, I am currently representing myself as a father, all right, and having kids in the Wilmer school system. I'm currently also on the police department as a school resource officer, and I wanted to say how important it is to have those school resource officers in the school for any type of, let's say, active shooter situation, terroristic threats, et cetera. As an officer, we always train for the worst and we hope for the best. All right? I've been to several trainings, you know, with active shooter stuff, along with other, uh, let's, let's say, briefings about other active shooter situations recently, a Sandy Hook, and also, um, I'm trying to remember what it is. Put me on the spot here. In those situations, the biggest thing you can do is, for one, have an officer there in the schools. Currently, we have four officers in the school. As of, if we don't get approval for another officer for 2019, one of those officers is going to go away, and that is probably going to be the one in the elementary. All right? Those are some of the softest targets we have in the city. All right? So I guess my big question is, what is a life worth to you guys? And I know what it's worth to me, and not a single life is worth not getting an officer for, I'm not sure what it costs, a hundred and some thousand dollars a year, in, in my mind. All right? So, and, and it's not just that. There, there's other officers. As me being a school resource officer, it's about building relationships with these young students. All right? With that, teaching them, giving them a positive role model. I'm in the schools, I'm in the elementary school, and it's not, I just don't sit in my office, you know? I'm there, I'm out there, I'm in the classrooms. I help teach whenever I can. If somebody's having a problem, I go deal with that. We also work traffic. We also, if there's any custody issues or other incidents that happen in the school, we also deal with that. It's all about the safety of the students and the staff. I personally, my wife and I, we have three kids in the Wilmer school, school district, and I feel better that there's an officer in those schools. All right? Even if it's for a couple days, a week, you know, you guys might have grandkids or other kids here too, that are in the schools, school system here. And, and the importance of it is, in my mind, is overwhelming to have, have them in there. And it's been helpful for me, being on the road in the summertime, all these kids come up to me.
Thank you for your comments.
All right, thank you.
Next, we have Shelley, Shelley Venegay. Is that right, Shelley? Is that right?
Yeah, Shelley Venegay. Um, live inside of Wilmer city limits. I am the completely biased wife of Officer James Venegay.
Just a minute, please.
Sorry, my computer's timed out here.
I thought maybe it was three minutes ago.
Ready? Okay. It's ready to go now.
So I'm going to try to wear three different hats here, quick. Um, first, as the wife of an officer who happens to be an SRO in our school district, I can tell you there is not a place that we go in this town, not a jog that we go for, groceries, restaurant, anywhere we go where he isn't flocked with little kids, or bigger kids, or even adults who have been through the system, the school system, and had to interact with our officers. Not only the school officers, but all the officers do a great job of community policing. SROs are at the forefront of that. It doesn't matter if he's had no contact with those kids' parents or 20 contacts with those parents, those kids still see him as a person that they trust, and that's what community policing is all about. SROs are our first line in doing that. Second hat, as a businessperson, I know you guys are fiscally conservative. I totally appreciate that. Thank you for keeping us on budget, but you have to put this expense in perspective. I think in the September 4th meeting, it came up, this expense is $117,000. That's point 73% of your budget. It's about the same amount that we set as a council priority for playground equipment in our community, which is also vastly important, but I think this is above and beyond, um, that importance level. My last hat is, as James said, as a mom in this community, I have three boys that are in the Wilmer district. There are 4,162 students in our district, breaks down to about 28 bucks a day, or 28 bucks a student for the year to keep them safe, and I can't imagine you guys talking to one person in our community who would say, "My child is at worth 28 bucks for that little extra measure of safety, for that little extra piece of trust and building faith in our community and in our officers." I think it's vastly important. I wanted to come and speak my mind, and I would just sum up my statements by saying, if you haven't had time or if you're on the fence about the decision, spend some time with these guys. Come hang out for a couple hours and see what they actually do day in and day out in the schools. I'm hopefully not overstepping here too felt, but I think they would welcome the opportunity. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comments. Next, I'm just going to go with Paula Holverson. I'm going to miss your middle name there, so you can do your whole, whole name, and then if you're in the city or without.
Um, my name is Paula Ulyssen Holverson, and I live in Atwater, actually. Um, I'm, my name, like I said, is Paula Ulyssen Holverson, and I am the community liaison for the In Common Project that is taking place here in Wilmer. Um, In Common is a year-long community songwriting and poetry project of the American Composers Forum funded by the Otto Bremer Trust. As part of the project, a composer in residence was chosen to lead activities in Wilmer with the goal of bringing community members together to share stories and build relationships through song and poetry. Kashi Manna Ahua, a St. Paul's-based singer-songwriter, was selected to, to take on this project as our composer in residence. We had our kickoff event last Saturday at Celebrate Arts Celebrate Coffee where Kashi Manna performed with area musicians and followed that with a songwriting session. If you missed her at Celebrate Arts Celebrate Coffee, you will have several more opportunities to meet and work with Kashi Manna. The next event will take place at the Destination Playground from 10:00 to noon on Saturday, September 22nd. I also encourage you to check out our Facebook page at In Common Wilmer to see a list of events planned and to keep up to date with more events as they're added. No experience is necessary to participate in these events, and everyone is encouraged to participate as they are comfortable. Yes, even those who wish to just watch the process are welcome. If you, um, I hope that you consider participating in this very special opportunity for the Wilmer community and encourage others to take advantage of this unique way to get to know each other better. Does anybody have any questions?
We don't take any comments, so thank you for your comments. Appreciate that. Next, I have Lisa.
Milachek.
Milachek.
Yes. My notes are in.
I know your other, I know your other name better, so.
Oh, yes. Nielsen.
Do you reside within the city or without?
We do reside in the city of Wilmer, yep.
Thank you, go ahead.
My name is Lisa Milachek, and I'm the head secretary at the Area Learning Center. We are, um, just kind of pigging back off what they said in support of another full officer here in Wilmer. We are blessed at our school to have Officer James full-time, and, um, it's not very often you find a 6'4" police officer known in the district as Cupcake, but he's there. And the impact that he has on the students in this district, whether it be the high school students or the elementary students, the relationships that he has with them, you, it's just, it's like any other, they respect him, they trust him on all levels of questions and that.
You're doing well.
What?
You're doing well.
Thanks. Having an officer in the building, especially one like ours, um, brings a sense of security and safety. You never know what those students have walked through to get to that door of that school, and if we can make them feel safe and secure, I think that's important. And then now, as I speak for a mom, not just an employee of the school, but I also have two kids in the school district and a husband that teaches in an elementary school. It's, I think that student safety should be our number one priority. It's hard to, um, practice lockdown drills and active shooter drills as an employee and to know as a mom, your students are practicing and your kids are practicing that as well, but unfortunately, that's the reality of the world we live in. And, um, just, I don't want you to take the safety of our students and employees in this district and turn it into a budget cut. These are our future, our future city council members that are in our district right now, and I think that their safety is important. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next, we have Betty.
Can't read my writing.
No. It looks like, I'm not even going to say what it looks like.
I hate to say it, I work for this school, and you can't even read my writing. Betty Dawson, and I do not live in the city of Wilmer. I am also here to talk about, um, just hopefully reconsidering our adding on to the police force. And as a school employee, I wear a little bit of a different hat. I am a program coordinator right now at the ALC, but for 25 years, I was a school social worker in the elementary buildings and had an awesome opportunity to work with many of our officers. And before, we had our SRO that would come to visit, um, at the school level. First of all, mental health-wise, we can try to prevent it, we can add all kinds of stuff, and we can help these kids who have the mental health issues, but, um, we can't take it away. Unfortunately, I wish we could. I wish we could get rid of that, but we can't. And, um, having a police officer in our buildings, um, it helps that to, to an extreme. We, I mean, they are there for us, as Officer Venegay had said. They know, they get, they get, they have all the trainings to help, to help with that. Me, as a school social worker, I can go in and I can try to do that, but if a student's having a tough day, as was said previously, I cannot, I do not know what they're coming in with. I do not know what they had happened the night before, what that, how that's changed them. We don't have that. I wish we, I wish we could, um, but we don't, and having that extra person in the building makes a huge difference. And as a program coordinator, coordinator now for four, four, four years, I worked beside Officer Venegay and, and the other SROs. They're awesome. They have, we, anybody who comes in has been extremely helpful, and, um, they make these relationships that it's, it's unbelievable. The kids will come on, get, come in on a daily basis and say, "Hey, Cupcake, do you have a minute?" Yep, I do. And it's, it's a constant thing. And without that, even when he gets pulled away, you can feel the presence, you can feel that missing, and so I, I too, hope you reconsider or consider keeping that or adding that position. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next, we have consideration of the 2019 Economic Development Commission budget. Mr. Aaron Bachman.
Aaron Bachman, EDC Executive Director, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. Uh, the proposed 2019 budget, uh, accomplishes a couple of things, and like the last two years, it's a balanced budget, revenues approximately $587,600. County levy would go up about 2.7% or $14,000, which is less than the last two years, each of the last two years. We have a couple of budgetary drivers in terms of what is driving the budget, and one of those is related to committees, and the other one's personal services. We have five standing committees for the EDC, and they are ag and renewable energy, broadband and technology, business retention expansion, or BRE, finance, and then marketing and public relations. In terms of a couple of notable areas for the budget, we keep the Tiger II grant in the budget pertaining to the Wilmer Y project. We increased the ag committee's budget by about $9,500 to enable additional events and training for ag producers. Should be noted that a significant portion of that is covered by corporate sponsorships, and this year, we had $6,000 that was generated by corporate sponsors for the ag committee. It increases the BRE committee's budget by about $2,500 to move ahead with strategic goals, and, uh, in, for 2018, I might add, we had, uh, four main goals that we focused on. Transportation infrastructure, Highway 23, childcare initiative, diverse business and opportunity zones, and I happen to think that we've made progress on at least three of those. Obviously, the, the 105 million for Highway 23 was notable. Connie has been active on the childcare initiative. There's a task force that's been created that has close to two dozen people that are actively engaged on that issue. Diverse businesses, um, you're probably aware that WAMBC is in the process of dissolution, and the EDC is in the process of taking over their assets and loan portfolio, so there's continuity of service. And so I think we've been making some progress in a number of areas. In addition to salary increases, the, there is a cap on the employer contribution for health insurance at 8.3%. Anything above that is the responsibility of the employees. And I do look carefully at all the items, line items each year, and office expenses are going down about 1.7%. So I'd be happy to try to answer any questions that you may have regarding the proposed 2019 budget.
Counsel?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to approve the EDC budget as presented. Discussion. Councilmember Schwantes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Aaron, thank you for your presentation, and I would just like to recognize Mr. Bachman and Connie Schmal, Ms. Schmal, for the work that they do, uh, and the rest of your teams, those folks that do serve on the committees and things. We've seen really great things coming out of the office, and I just truly appreciate the work and effort that you put into it, your leadership. We've, we've, uh, it seems like if you drive downtown, uh, we are open for business, and that's a message we've wanted to send, and you've carried that message, and I just want to thank you for the work and effort that you and your team do.
Thank you.
Motion made and seconded to approve the budget as submitted. All in favor, the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. That motion does carry. I, as well, would like to thank you for the work that you do and, uh, pass it on to your staff. Had a meeting with Connie just last week, who was very informative, so thank you for the good work you guys do. Keep it up.
Thank you.
Next, we have consideration, um, next, we have consideration of the 2019 Wilmer Municipal Utilities Proposed Budget.
Good evening, Mayor. Counsel.
Forgot to tell Steve that I was going to move you next, so.
Oh, thank you. 2019 budget for the Wilmer Municipal Utilities. First of all, I'm John Hearn, uh, general manager of Wilmer Municipal Utilities. Our budget as approved by the commission for the electric, water, and district heating system consists of revenues of $36,303 expenditures, up 1.48%, mostly in power supply purchases for expenditures of $29,370,000, leaves us retained earnings of $4,788,000 of our combined operating budget for all three enterprises. Also, on the capital side, we're looking at roughly, uh, projected $8 million in capital projects. Our biggest expenditure there is the continuation of our water treat, treatment plant improvements. So, uh, we're at about 30% design stage with that project, and funding for that project is going to consist of selling bonds to fund that. How do our rates stack up in relation to our budgets and our five-year cash flow statements? On the electric side, with the projects that we have budgeted or anticipating, our electric rates, uh, cover our expenditures on the cash flow side of things. However, when we, when you hear us start talking about a rate study, it'll be not to generate more revenue, it'll be to look at what our fixed costs are in relation to our fixed charges. And the reason that's important with, uh, distributed generation or renewables that are coming, we got to make sure that our costs are properly allocated so that, uh, everyone is paying their fair share. On the water side, however, it's a little different. Uh, with the water treatment plant coming up, uh, right now, engineer's estimate with engineering is about nine point, or yeah, 9.5 million, uh, for the water treatment plant, and then we're also between utility and, uh, the city, looking at transferring some of the water department funds over to the water department that have been picked up by the city the last few years. So, uh, there will be a, a need for a water, uh, rate study, which will turn into a water rate increase probably beginning, uh, January 1st of 2020. So, uh, unless there's any additional questions, that would conclude my update on the budgets.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Councilmember Christensen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, John. The capital improvement, $8 million you referred to is, uh, for waters, strictly for one well, correct?
No. Uh, what I'm talking about, when I'm talking about our water treatment plant improvement, uh, we have two water treatment plants in town, they're both aging. We, uh, are looking at, uh, the water quality that's coming out of our plants, and we need to update it. So what we're looking at is a northeast water treatment plant, uh, that 9.5 million is for improvements to the water treatment plant, and we're converting, uh, that plant to a biological treatment plant.
Yeah, when you say water treatment plant, you're talking about the water tower over there in northeast.
Correct.
Yeah. So the public can understand that. Okay, thank you.
Yep, thanks.
Councilmember Plowman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, thank you for your presentation, the numbers tonight. It's my understanding, correct me if I'm wrong, but, uh, treatment on the front end may substantially help us long-term meeting MPCA goals in terms of addressing, uh, future costs and allocations with upgrades to the wastewater treatment plant. Does, does what we're looking at doing right now, what's a part of the plan, do you see that making substantial strides in, uh, kind of mitigating some of those, uh, problems coming down the road?
Uh, that would be a correct statement. Based on the modeling that has been completed on, uh, the water quality that we have, right now, we are providing the community with water, with about 60% of the water coming from the southwest treatment plant, uh, and about 40% from the northeast. When we bring our new plant online, we're going to reverse that. Instead of 60 coming from there, uh, 60% we're anticipating will be coming from the northeast treatment plant, or as Councilmember Christensen said, by the Wilmer Water Towers where that treatment plant is. That water is considerably softer and higher quality. So it'll mitigate, uh, to some extent, uh, the softing, uh, treatment plant that may potentially be required to meet the chloride discharge that, you know, we're all well aware of going on out there. Uh, are we going to totally be able to mitigate that? That remains to be seen yet. A lot of study work has been done between the utilities as well as the city. We've, uh, are collaborating on, uh, what we're doing and what the city can do out at the wastewater treatment plant to meet the chloride standards, so. There's, there'll be a lot more discussion coming forward on that issue, uh, as we move ahead here.
Okay. Well, thank you. It's, it's good to hear that the utilities and the commission has, uh, taken a full-spectrum look at the entire issue rather than, uh, just a fix or a patch on the backend only, because like I said, it's something, when you do your research, and you already know this, and commissioners already know this, yeah, across the country, sweeping regulations are changing, and, uh, communities such as ourselves who have relatively new wastewater treatment plants are finding ourselves in, uh, compromised situations where we got to come up with a lot of money for a, a backend fix, and sometimes now it's so much money that if we can fix things on the front end, I think that's, that's the way to go. It's still not cheap, but, uh, but it's, it's encouraging to hear that you're looking at it from all angles. Thank you.
Councilmember Plowman, yes, I think it's, it's vitally important that, uh, we look holistically at the needs here, uh, so that in the end, uh, the outcome is the least cost process for the community, so.
Thank you.
We have a motion that's been sec, uh, made and seconded. All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. That motion does carry.
Thank you.
Thank you, John, for the work you do, and thank you for your staff as well. Appreciate that. Mr. Olkins, um, before you get started on the levy, um, we heard this evening from some individuals concerned about the SRO position. Um, with the levy that you have, uh, that we have prepared and put in front of you, would there be the ability to put that back into the budget or not? Or would that levy have to change?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, the levy that's before you tonight in your packet is a, a levy that, as you are aware, uh, when the budget was presented, the preliminary budget was presented to the council on, uh, September 4th, was a balanced budget levy. Uh, the levy tonight, the action by the council tonight setting the levy, uh, can be reduced but cannot be increased. So if the council would want to add, uh, one additional officer, uh, onto that levy, uh, tonight would be the night to do it, and then the discussion could take place, and it could, the levy could be reduced but could not be increased after the action tonight.
Okay, thank you. Go ahead with your report.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, as, as you are aware, the, uh, budget that was presented to you on September 4th was a balanced budget with an estimated levy of $5,250,000. Uh, this levy was, uh, approximately a 5.5% increase on the dollar amount that was levied in 2018, uh, with the new construction, as we have discussed in the past, that would lower that percentage down to a 5% increase on the tax rate. Uh, part of the process of the budgeting, uh, procedures is to, uh, set a preliminary levy. Annually, the city is required to set this preliminary levy by September 30th. Uh, as I mentioned in my opening remarks, uh, this levy set tonight can be reduced, uh, after tonight, but cannot be increased. Uh, once the amount is certified to the county, the county will use this amount to notify property owners of the taxing jurisdiction and what their proposed property taxes, uh, for the upcoming year would be. Uh, the city would then be required to take final action in the Truth in Taxation Hearing, which is held in December, adopting a final amount or a final levy and, and budget, um, with that amount. So the recommendation tonight, uh, is to pass the recommended resolution setting the property tax levy at $5,250,000. setting the property tax levy at five million, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, which was in the, in the preliminary budget. If the council chooses to change that, you certainly can do that.
I would make a motion to pass the recommended resolution for the preliminary tax levy at five million, two hundred and fifty thousand.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to adopt the resolution setting the preliminary property tax level at five million, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Discussion. Councilmember Christensen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm glad we still have another chance to lower this. We can't raise it, but we can lower this. And I would encourage the council to consider the increase, two hundred and seventy-five thousand, seven fifty-five, be taken from our excess funds for the reason, following reason. This council in the last couple of years has passed and given tax abatements in TIF districts. If we had not done that, we wouldn't be seeing this increase. We'd even have more money to spend. So we're giving it to the big guy and we're taking it out of the little guy's pocket, the average taxpayer in Wilmer. I hope you will consider that before we pass the budget. I think it's in December, if not, Mr. Mayor. Please consider that and, and ask your constituents about that or discuss it with your coffee mates. I think it's responsible of us to do that because of these TIF districts and tax abatement. We've got the money set aside and it's taxpayer money. We don't have to increase the budget by five percent. Thank you.
Steve, I'm sorry, Finance Director Okens, is that data that made it as December fourth, correct?
December third is what I have in, Mr. Mayor.
Yes. So that would be the date that that adjustment could be made. Just some discussion, Councilmember Palmer.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll just point a clarification. As you had asked a question earlier, we passed the levy and say there's an additional position that we want to add or something like that. Just for public knowledge, we do have the ability still during the budgeting process to shift around funds so we don't lose that opportunity regardless of what we do tonight. Okay, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, if I could mention that we did have a public meeting and intend to hold two more for the public to, to give their input. The meeting last Tuesday was primarily to discuss revenues. The one coming up tomorrow night is to discuss fixed charges versus flexible charges and how they relate. And the final one is a summary of all those. So there is a couple of opportunities where the public can come to the public meeting and give their input. And they can go on to the city website, RAC eight and Facebook page and if they have questions or comments, can submit them in those avenues as well.
Fantastic, thank you.
Councilmember Fagerly.
How many people were there last Tuesday?
There was, I believe, six individuals plus the mayor and I.
Yeah, it was nine. You forgot Dave.
I forgot the cameraman. You're correct, sir.
Maybe we could mention the time and place of tomorrow's meeting.
Fire station, six P M tomorrow evening. Councilmember Nelson.
As long as we're talking about the meeting, it's listed to last for two hours, but it will only last as long as the presentation and the questions. So people don't have to commit a two-hour timeframe. They can come and will probably be done in less, less than an hour. But it will also be recorded, so if you're not there, you can, can watch it. And I think that will accomplish what we're trying to do also, so.
Okay. The consideration is for a resolution setting the preliminary property tax levy at five million, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Roll call.
Councilmember Christensen.
Aye.
Schwantes.
Aye.
Osmiss.
Aye.
Mesky.
Aye.
Plowman.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Seven ayes, zero nays.
That roll call passes. Next is consideration of an ordinance authorizing the sale of real property. Mr. Peterson, our public, Mr. Peterson, our Planning Development Services Director.
Mayor Kelvin, members of the council. The city has received an offer to purchase Lot Twelve of Block Five of Pleasant View Third Edition from the city. These are some properties that were, the lots were created a number of years ago when Fourteenth Avenue or, yeah, Fourteenth Avenue was brought all the way out to Lakeland Drive. The city had been gifted this property by a developer many years ago. This is a lot that sits at the intersection of Pleasant View Drive or Fourteenth Avenue, whatever you want to call it on that curve, and Thirteenth Street Southeast. Thirteenth Street has not been developed, so there's only a public street on one side of this lot. We've not marketed these properties for sale. The city has sold a couple to Habitat over the last couple of years and the purchase price was arrived at by looking at average sales prices over the last couple of years in Wilmer and trying to adjust it for lot size. This property is vacant and it's suitable for the construction of a single-family home and the property is appropriately zoned. The person who submitted the offer would like to close on the property on October fifth and so we would need to proceed very quickly in order to make that happen with a purchase agreement. It's a recommendation of staff that the council accept the offer and introduce an ordinance for the sale of the property with the hearing to be held on October first.
So moved.
Motion made and seconded to approve the sale of real property in the amount of twenty-six thousand dollars. Introduce the issue for a public hearing on October first. Discussion. Councilmember Fagerly.
So does this have to go to the Planning Commission for approval?
Yes. It will, yes.
And then this lot is on a corner?
Correct.
So if a road goes in, I suppose it'd be to the west of them, would they be assessed for that?
They would not. Her address side will be towards the existing street, towards Pleasant View. And so because she'd be a corner lot, she would not be assessed for that other side.
Okay. And there's no assessments on this one right now?
They're all paid. They're, they're, I think they're originally about ninety-eight hundred dollars. So that's covered, everything's covered in the purchase price.
Okay.
Councilmember Nelson.
Thank you. With the location of that street and we talked about that there is a park, park, playground equipment back there that you currently can't get to because of the, there's no physical street going back in there. But just like you did with the Habitat property, you worked to level the ground that wasn't next to that. I'm just wondering if we can try, as this will be a corner lot, to make that playground equipment accessible at the same time.
Are you suggesting that Public Works or Engineering do something with the street or to take part of the public right-of-way and just make that accessible?
There, there is, there is a street designed to go back in there, but if we could even just simply have it graded, there, a little fill in there so someone could get to that playground equipment as there will be houses on both sides of that designed street.
Okay. Sean, it's yours.
Mayor, members of the council, we can absolutely look into that. We can add it to a future streets project if you would like to do something.
I'm not looking for a, necessarily a street, but more of a, a path that could get to that playground equipment, just as the other park in, in Pleasant View does not have asphalt all the way back you, there's a path back that way too. Just looking for some way that people could get to that. It's pretty hard to even ride a bike right now through there because of the grooves with someone driving in it when it was wet. And I'm just wondering if it couldn't, we couldn't just get some filler, filler something to make that playground equipment accessible?
Yeah, we can, we can look into that from, from both directions, actually.
Okay, thank you.
Just some discussion. All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. That motion does carry. Bruce, thank you for your work. Bruce, could you go back to the podium, please? Can you take the agenda and move the agenda up so that those watching it can see the agenda on the computer screen?
Oh. Well, I can try.
Next item on the agenda is consideration of an introduction of food truck ordinance and formal appeal procedures for business licenses and permits. Ms. Thompson.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, as presented at the September tenth work session, staff is recommending adopting a food truck policy for the city of Wilmer. As suggested by council at the work session, the following changes have been made to the proposed ordinance. Under Section Eight, we added Section Eight dash one five nine B, which deals with ice cream trucks are allowed to operate within the public right-of-way in residential districts and do not require permit. Also, under Section Eight dash one six three, item twenty-four, freestanding food tents not associated with food truck or trailer are not allowed on city-owned property unless they have obtained a special event or street fair permit or if they are operating through an organization that has already obtained such permit. We also added Section Eight dash one five nine C. A mobile food unit may operate in a private commercial or industrial parking lot and on private residential property with the written consent of the private property owner. We also updated the map to where we changed, the allowable areas are all indicated in red rather than coloring by a zoning, by zoning district. And the council had asked at the committee revisit the fees proposed and the committee met and are recommending no change in the fee structure originally presented to council. Proposed ordinance before you also includes a uniform appeal procedure as recommended by City Attorney Robert Scott. And that is Article Ten in the ordinance before you. It's staff's recommendation that council introduce a proposed ordinance and set a public hearing for October first. Also approve summary publication of the ordinance due to the length and cost of publishing the entire ordinance.
Council, what are your wishes?
So moved. Second.
Motion made and seconded to introduce for a public hearing on October first, food truck ordinance and a formal appeal procedure for business licenses or permits. Discussion. Councilmember Nelson.
Just a clarification, the discussion on the fees, can that take place after the public hearing too? Or do we need to discuss that now before?
The fee's gonna be by resolution.
Well, you'd have to, you'd have to adjust it now or otherwise it might be a substantial change, correct?
My understanding is that the permit fees would be adopted in the city's annual license and fee resolution. So I think as long as you've stated that a fee will be imposed in the ordinance, you are free to set that amount at the time you consider the annual resolution.
All in favor of that motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. That motion does carry. Next is consideration of bid and pay, for paving Lions Park and Dog Park parking lot. Mr. Christensen, our Public Works Director.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. In front of you, we received bids, or quotes, rather, to do two different parking lots. This is one of the two that you'll be hearing tonight for Lions Park, which is also the Dog Park. It was listed that way. Received, this would be to remove and replace or rebuild the parking lot and access to that park. Two quotes were received. Dunick Inc. is the low at thirty-four thousand, seven hundred and thirty-two dollars. Recommendation would be to award the bid, authorize notice to proceed for the project to Dunick Inc. for seven, thirty-four thousand, seven hundred and thirty-two dollars.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to approve the parking lot paving for Lions Park and Dog Park to Dunick's Inc. Discussion. Councilmember Mesky.
We had talked about this before with some access issue for people in wheelchairs and other ones, handicap accessibility to the park. And at that time, we had talked perhaps about putting a wider sidewalk into the Dog Park as well as a, sort of a platform for people that are wheelchair-bound to be able to bring their dogs. I don't see that in here. Is that something that has been removed?
I don't think Councilmember Mesky has been removed. I think this is an old map, but I believe that we have that in there. If not, we, I agree with you, we need to have that.
Okay.
I'll, I'll look into that, figure out, find out why it's not on this particular.
All right.
I think we, because I thought we had done something internally.
Well, I thought we had talked about it and in the price, the bid is sounding very familiar, but just looking at the map and it only has the entrance in and the parking lot.
Correct.
It's not showing any of that concrete work to the park itself.
Right. And I'm wondering if this is from an, an old aerial map. I'll, I'll look into that and make sure.
Councilmember Nelson.
Thank you. Just a question on the width of the entrance. It appears that it's a little wider than it is now. Would that be correct?
Yeah, the proposal is five feet wider than it currently is.
Thank you.
Just some discussion. Roll call.
Councilmember Schwantes.
Aye.
Osmiss.
Aye.
Mesky.
Aye.
Plowman.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Christensen.
Aye.
Seven ayes, zero nays.
The resolution passes. Next is consideration of bid for paving Civic Center East parking lot. Mr. Christensen, our Planning and Development, our Public Works Director. I got you back.
Mayor, members of the council, in front of you is the other quote we received recently. This would be for the parking lot on the east side of the existing Cardinal Arena or Civic Center. It access the storage and the area in the back with the overhead doors. We received two quotes for this particular project. The low being, again, from Dunick Inc. in the amount of fifty-two thousand, one hundred and sixty-four dollars. Recommendation would be to award the bid to Dunick Inc. in the amount of fifty-two thousand, one hundred and sixty-four dollars and authorize signatures and notice to proceed.
Moved to approve.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to approve the bids for the Civic Center East parking lot. Discussion. Roll call.
Councilmember Osmiss.
Aye.
Mesky.
Aye.
Plowman.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Christensen.
Aye.
Schwantes.
Aye.
Seven ayes, zero nays.
That resolution passes as well. Next is a consideration of professional services agreement for Cambridge Development Drainage Improvements. Mr. Christensen.
Mayor, members of the council, in front of you is the professional agreement, professional services agreement, rather, with, excuse me, Bolton and Mink of Wilmer to do the design and construction inspection of, or, or project administration, rather, of the drainage for Cambridge Edition or Cambridge Estates, I think it's called. This would be the outfall that we discussed a couple of months ago over on the east side of town. Recommendation would be to award the professional services in the amount of sixty-six thousand, five hundred and sixty dollars to Bolton Mink and authorize signatures for the drainage improvements project. I'll move staff's recommendation, Mr. Mayor.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to approve professional services agreement with Donahue. I'm sorry. Start all over. Trying to read some different things here. Consideration of professional services agreement for Cambridge Development Drainage Improvements with Bolton Mink. Discussion. All, Councilmember Fagerly.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So if we would have had staff, we could have designed this herself?
Yeah, if we would have had the number of staff necessary for it, right.
Okay, because, I mean, the amount seems kind of high.
Yep.
But is there any guarantee that this is gonna work? Are they gonna be liable if the, if the properties that they're supposed to protect or the ones downstream get flooded?
Water's gonna do whatever it does. This will protect the development in Cambridge. This will, as, as it's designed, will relieve that pond for the back-to-back one-hundred-year events and should not, should not add more water to that existing system because the water gets there already. So as far as the engineers being liable for properties downstream, I would say no.
Are we cleaning out the rest of the ditch?
We've got that in, I'm sorry, we've got that in, in discussions for probably next year to clean out the upper end of that ditch as it comes off the highway. Is that what you're talking about?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's getting pretty overgrown there. So we've, we'll, we'll do that in and amongst the time we, we cross it with the, with the pathway that we talked about earlier tonight, too.
Thank you. Thank you.
Councilmember Nelson.
Just, would you just review the area that this, this agreement is going to cover?
The area that the construction will cover, or the area that the agreement covers?
You're looking at the agreement, right?
Yep.
And I'm assuming that there are other drainage issues out there besides just this one, so I'm just wondering what area you're actually looking at? The actual streets, or is it more than the?
Okay, so if I understand what you're, what you're asking, this will drain the existing pond, landmark pond, Cambridge Pond, from the south. There'll be a drainage structure and a level, it'd be a structure that will maintain the high water level of that pond at the southwest corner, near the southwest corner of that pond. The pipe will travel west, the drain, it'll drain to the west across Twenty-third Street, across the south end of the parking lot of Best Western and Holiday Inn Express, and then across the, alongside of the ninth hole of the golf course and into the branch, I think it's branch three.
Thank you.
Now, to tack on to that a little bit with Mr. Fagerly's question earlier, and the dollar, somebody with the dollar amount and internal staff, there's a lot of utilities. In fact, you name it, and there's a dry utility that serves at over about six or eight lots that's all in between the pond and Twenty-third Street, and so to try to snake a twenty-four-inch pipe in there as well is quite a challenge.
So there are other water issues out there on the streets? If that, that water doesn't drain into that pond, then it is not resolving any other water issues out there?
This only drains the pond, that's correct.
Councilmember Christensen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. But it also takes in the excess that will back up into that pond from the corner of Holiday Inn and the highway there.
Correct.
So, so it is mitigating the, the problem that they're having over there. I do have a question too, the, wasn't this designed ten, twelve years ago?
I don't know if it was that long ago. Actually, it was, I think oh-eight, I think was the, was the last letter we received from Bolton Mink with this design as a, as an option at that time.
And is, is it completely different, the design?
No, it's almost identical.
But still the same amount, or that, that sixty-six thousand dollars? And I, and I can see where there, it's like going into a jungle with the twenty-four-inch pipe with all utilities below there, but that is an easement, right?
It's an easement, but it's only five feet.
Oh, okay.
Because it's just dry utilities, so they're, they're not, they're what, eighteen inches below the surface, twenty-four inches below the surface.
Okay, but we'll be lower than that.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Additional discussion. Roll call.
Councilmember Mesky.
Aye.
Plowman.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Christensen.
Aye.
Schwantes.
Aye.
Osmiss.
Aye.
Seven ayes, zero nays.
The resolution passes. Next is a consideration of purchase of wastewater treatment facility vehicles. Mr. Christensen.
Mayor, members of the council, in front of you, and per CIP and vehicle purchasing program, these two vehicles in front of you were both approved through the transportation committee, or the vehicle committee, and the recommendation would be to approve the purchase of a two thousand and nineteen International HV six-one-three from Nelson Leasing in the amount of eighty-one thousand three hundred and ninety-six dollars and one penny. Also to approve the purchase of an eighteen, two thousand and eighteen Ford F-350 from Nelson Auto Center and Burt's Truck Equipment in the amount of fifty-three thousand one hundred and ninety-five dollars thirty-six cents. I'll move staff's recommendation, Mr. Mayor, in the first.
Item. Additional, second additional discussion. Mr. Christensen, did we consider a local purchase of that F-350 as well, or because it has the equipment on it, do we have to purchase it from Nelson?
We didn't have to purchase from Nelson, but this came, because the equipment came from the local buying co-op, or from the joint powers co-op, or whatever this particular one is called.
So this vehicle is not available locally?
Well, the chassis would be, probably, and then we'd have to get, we'd have to get the equipment separately as well.
Most are made and seconded, discussion. Roll call.
Councilmember Plowman.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Christensen.
Aye.
Schwantes.
Aye.
Osmiss.
Aye.
Mesky.
Aye.
Seven ayes, zero nays.
The resolution passes. Next is a consideration of a change order number one for Civic Center Ice System Replacement.
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor, there's two separate resolutions on that last one.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'll move the second resolution, approve the two thousand and eighteen Ford F-350 from Nelson Auto Center.
Second.
Most are made and seconded, discussion. Roll call.
Councilmember Fagerly.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Christensen.
Aye.
Schwantes.
Aye.
Osmiss.
Aye.
Mesky.
Aye.
Plowman.
Aye.
Seven ayes, zero nays.
The resolution passes as well. Next is consideration of change order number one for the Civic Center Ice Replacement System. Already?
I know what you're saying. No, it, to, to, mayor, members of the council, to start off with a positive, we have got a local contractor that has started this project about two weeks ago, and we have, they've come a long ways already in a couple weeks. They've got, I think the gas line was moved today, or they were working on it today anyway, to have no interruption in service to that, to the building and that facility while this project is going on. That being said, that's kind of my, my segue into this change order. Change order number one, in the amount of twenty-eight thousand forty-five dollars, is from relocating or is needed to relocate existing air-cooled condenser for the Blue Line Arena to a temporary location so we can build the new refrigeration system that will run both buildings. We had to move that, the reason it's an already change order, we had to move that because of the construction schedule delay that we talked about many times over the summer, and whether we try to cram everything into the summer and have it, a new system up for this season, or whether we delay the start and end of that project so that we can, and then use the existing system for this current year. When the decision was made to delay that schedule, we missed the fact that the condenser needed to be moved temporarily so that we could build the new one. So this one is to do, this change order is to do exactly that for twenty-eight thousand forty-five dollars. So moved.
Second.
Most are made and seconded to approve a change order for Civic Center Ice Replacement System. Discussion. Roll call.
Councilmember Nelson.
Aye.
Christensen.
Aye.
Schwantes.
Aye.
Osmiss.
Aye.
Mesky.
Aye.
Plowman.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Seven ayes, zero nays.
The resolution passes. Next will be the police department stats for the month of August 2018. Chief Feld.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I was asked tonight to bring the monthly calls for service for the Wilmer Police Department to your attention and answer any questions or anything that you may have. Just items of note here, if you look on the left column, those are the two thousand and eighteen August statistics, August two thousand and seventeen or next to it. Some of the numbers are fairly consistent. If you look, some increases or larger increases are animal complaints, domestics increased substantially, family service calls, fraud cases, harassment, lost and found, suspicious people, or suspicious activity that's been reported, and thefts. Now, with some of those things, the suspicious activity, the large increase in that, part of it is that people are becoming more aware of problems in the neighborhood, and we're trying to make it more accessible for them to call us to report those things so we can check them out. You'll also see too that some other notable increases are public assists from last month. And public assists, I wish I could quantify it a little bit better, but that's kind of a, a catch-all category, where when it doesn't fit into the other fifty-some groups, that's one where they will typically put it. And then you'll see that there's a substantial increase in traffic stops. Last year going from three hundred and fifty-seven in August to five hundred and thirty-two this August. The, the staff in our department really tries to put an emphasis on traffic enforcement and education, trying to, to knock down the number of crashes that happen and increase public safety that way. For calls for service for the year, as of the end of August, we're standing at thirteen thousand seven hundred and seventy-two calls for service. Just going from August of last year to this year, it's an increase of four hundred and thirty-five. At this rate, if it stays consistent through the end of the year, it will be over twenty thousand calls for service there, so. I do want to note that these calls for service, the numbers can sometimes be a little bit deceiving, I think I've talked about it at other meetings before, that each call for service, one call for service can be as simple as somebody calling in a, a mattress laying on the side of the road, we go check it out, ten minutes, and it's done. We turn it over to Sean for his crew to pick up at that point. But just as of about a week and a half ago, we had one call for service that's listed, well, two weeks ago, it's listed on here, that that one call for service took us fifteen officers initially to handle it, and we had, still have two officers currently working on it. It was a regu, a pretty serious assault that happened in town, so some things are happening, can take place quickly, others are very time-consuming here, so.
Thank you for your report, council. Councilmember Osmiss followed by Fagerly.
I thought it was interesting that usually when you have increases in thefts and burglaries, and those are all, take a lot of man-hours to, to work those kind of cases, but traffic stops are up. Usually when they're all busy attending to the other types of calls, they haven't got time to make traffic stops, so I thought that was kind of surprising.
We, we do have a force right now that is very active in traffic, that's not afraid, while they're going from one call to the other as time permits, to, to do traffic stops. There have been a limited number of TZD or special enforcement waves that have been happening. Most of those are coming up now, you maybe hear the advertisements on the, the radio and that type of thing. There weren't a lot that happened in August, but I think there was, there was one that happened there, but that wouldn't account for the, the large increase.
Councilmember Fagerly.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So these calls, are they coming to the police department, or to the sheriff first, and then they transfer them to you?
It's, they.
Or to your phone number?
They, they all, it's, it's taken by the same people, but there's, at the dispatch center, so it's the sheriff's department dispatchers that take the calls, but you have a separate, separate lines that ring for the police department, different ones that ring for the sheriff's department, and then they sort out, depending on, sometimes people will call the wrong number, or call nine-one-one, which is at both departments, and then they'll sort them out from there.
Thank you very much, and I appreciate the police department, I think you guys do a great job.
Thank you.
I got stopped on Friday. Morning, by Robins Island, he turned on the lights and pulled me over, and how great, what did I do? He said, "Your brake lights weren't working on the sides, but it was working up on top."
Okay.
So it was just a fuse, but I appreciated it.
Great, I, full credit goes to the, to the men and women in our department that are working out on the street, I'm blessed with a great crew.
Thank you.
Next we have the, thank you for your report, next we have the fire department stats for the month of August.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, before you, you see the August two thousand and eighteen stats of the fire department. The big one that sticks out at me would be the citizen complaints, that's kind of the generic category for us. These actually happen to be two different chemical spills, or not spills, smells outside of residents, so they didn't fit in any other category, so that's where they, that's where they get put. So you'll see that, once again, our calls are also fairly consistent from year to year. We are down a little bit on the car accidents, a little bit on the alarm activity, but up on cooking fires and burnt food. That's something that we are trying fairly hard to hit and educate people with. We noticed that the current amount of calls for the month of August were twenty-six, and year-to-date is a hundred and ninety-eight calls.
Still, any questions? Councilmember, sorry, Councilmember Christensen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Citizen complaints, what, what are we looking at there at the fire department?
That would be chemical spills or chemical smells, some sort of smell that they, it's happened, they thought they smelled.
Like natural gas or something, or?
Well, it, just unknown odors, basically is what it is, and both times when we were there, there was no odor, so.
And then you have.
It's kind of unknown.
You have the equipment, though, that can detect certain odors?
Certain levels of different chemicals and gases, yes.
Okay.
Lots of times it's, when it comes to that, it's kind of our nose to start with. Then you move into bigger and better stuff.
So you need a good nose to be a fireman?
Maybe.
Thank you.
Thank you for your report, appreciate it. Next we have the water fountain donation from the Lions Park. Mr. Christensen, our public works director. And then you can do state aid variances at the same.
Mayor, members of the council, in front of you is a donation from the Wilmer Noon Lions. They would like to donate a, a lion's head water fountain that would be placed at a city park, was the original proposal. Since that time, the city staff has recommended Rice Park as a selection to place this fountain, and we're even saying east of the shelter, next to the playground, if that kind of helps people visualize where this will be. Recommendation would be to approve the donation from Wilmer Noon Lions, and then authorize whatever agreements are necessary for the paperwork and, and purchase of that piece of equipment.
So moved.
Second.
Most are made and seconded to approve a purchase of a water fountain, lion's head water fountain be placed at Rice Park. Discussion. All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I'm sorry, resolution, because it's accepted a donation. Roll call.
Councilmember Christensen.
Aye.
Schwantes.
Aye.
Osmiss.
Aye.
Mesky.
Aye.
Plowman.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Seven ayes, zero nays.
That resolution passes. Next is state aid variance, request for state aid variance for the bike path on Lakeland Drive and Highway twelve. Mr. Christensen.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council, in front of you is Highway twelve east, that's what we're calling it, trail. Trail will run from Lakeland Elementary School north along Lakeland Drive, and then east along Highway twelve to Twenty-third Street southeast. This variance, for a path that'll be under construction, with any luck, will be under construction next summer. This variance allows us to construct the path within the existing right-of-way, not purchase additional permanent easements from twenty-two different landowners, but place a yellow stripe in lieu of a two-foot clear zone that is required by the grant.
Move to approve.
Second.
Most are made and seconded to approve a request in a state aid variance for the bike trail on Lakeland Drive and Highway twelve. Discussion. All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign?
Resolution.
It's a roll call.
Roll call.
It's a resolution. Councilmember Schwantes.
Aye.
Osmiss.
Aye.
Mesky.
Aye.
Plowman.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Christensen.
Aye.
Seven ayes, zero nays.
That resolution passes. Next we have a recreation coordinator job description from Mr. Ron Barthgardner, our recreation director. Rob?
Thank you, Mayor and the council. Tonight, we're seeking approval to post two job, recreation jobs for the rec. department. We met as a committee on September sixth to discuss this in length, and it came out We met as a committee on September 6th to discuss this in length, and it came out from the committee that we need to post two recreation coordinator positions, and with the Recreation Director taking more of the administrative duties of the arena manager. Currently, the Recreation Department has no program, is on staff. We have the Recreation Director acting as the Civic Center Manager, one clerical position, and Community Center Manager, and twofold time arena staffs. My recommendation is to approve the Recreation Corde- two Recreation Coordinator positions and direct staff to advertise ties of two positions.
So moved.
Second.
Most are made in second, to approve the hiring of two recreation specialists. Discussion. All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those who oppose, same sign. The motion carries. I believe now you'll be at full strength, once you get your hires done, so we're looking forward to great things. I think Counselmember Fagerly summed it up the best. We're looking for an excellent, top-notch Recreation Department, and we have you at the helm, and we know we're going to do good things, so go out and do great things, so.
Will do.
My involvement in meetings with you up to this point have been extremely professional. You're doing a great job, we really appreciate what you're doing, so keep up the good work.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Next, we have Mayor's comments. Today, I sat in on a meeting with the utilities and our Public Works Director, looking at new lights for downtown Wilmer. If you take a look at the lights that are downtown Wilmer, the bases are old, they can no longer get the parts, and so just making the council aware of the fact that that will be coming to us probably within the next year to two years, just making you aware of that. And also, on that same vein, talking about Main, downtown, Main Street, Wilmer has a meeting tomorrow, you're all invited to that, tomorrow, I believe it's at 11:00 a.m. at City Hall, to talk about Main Street and what they're going to do with that program. Sarah is, has been at a meeting all day today to talk about Main Street, to be given a report on that, and then just giving us an update on what's going on with that. And so the next thing is the school resource officer, and I know we normally don't talk about stuff that comes to us in front of the, you know, the meeting, but we don't talk to it when it gets brought up. But, you know, I, I talked with the chief since I made my presentation, and he's informed me that in, in March, they were at full strength. I wasn't aware of that, when I put the budget request together. The other thing I wasn't aware of is that the contract that was signed between the city and the school district calls for reducing the staff of the school resource officers if the council doesn't approve the position. I wasn't told that when I put the budget together. And so those are two troubling things, and so, again, you know, the mayor has handed the, the budget off to the council, the council to consider, and so I would like the council to consider asking our Finance Director to work within the budget to see if there's a way that we can put that school resource officer back in. You know, as Counselmember Fagerly said, you know, the budget can go, levy can go down, but it can't go up. But what I'm asking is, can we work within the parameters of the existing budget to maybe move some numbers around? You know, an example that came up in my mind today was, you know, when we took a look at the equipment purchase for the wastewater treatment plant, you know, there's substantial savings there on those dollars. You know, is there some, someplace that we can look, and the Finance Director can work with the city administrator and maybe find a way to fund this? And, you know, I mean, this is a council direction at this point, because I recommended not funding it until 2020, so not to fund it in 2019 budget, but in hearing the concerns and not knowing that that was in the contract, I think that it's in the best interest to keep our students safe. You know, I, I know there's nobody sitting around this, this council table that wants any harm to come to any of our students, I know that for a fact, because I know all of you personally, and, and I just maybe didn't have the right information when I made the recommendation, I feel kind of bad about it, so. This council would be so, so inclined to have the Finance Chair to work with the city administrator and Finance Director, I'd greatly appreciate that, so. With that, I'm going to start with Counselmember Osmus. Counselmember Osmus.
Well, I guess I would piggyback off of your comments, and just say that I would also like to speak to the proposal of the, of the budget cut, and to see if we can't find some funds in the budget to be able to keep that position. To me, when the taxpayers spoke, I mean, we had parents, we had school personnel, we had a, we had an act, acting school resource officer, and it isn't, it, it even goes beyond the safety of the kids in the school. They talked, all of them referred to the relationship building of the police officers with the students, and that carries over for years and years. And it's not quantitative, I mean, you can't measure it, but that relationship is very important, and I do think it's, it's worth finding that money and having that officer and having those officers in the schools, and I, I really hope we can do that.
Okay. Counselmember Meske?
Here, here, I would echo everything that you just said. I would also add, though, you know, Mr. Mayor, you're part of those, the setting of those priorities, that you've been privy to some of those conversations, so maybe some of that, things that maybe were last on the priority listing, maybe you could even provide some insight of maybe shifting some of those and make a recommendation to the council that we could adopt next meeting, that would be helpful as well. So thank you for that.
I could meet with Finance Director and work on that. And Counselmember Nelson.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. All good comments that are made, I think, good segue just to the fact that when a, when a topic or an issue does arise like this, it highlights, to me, that when there are issues that people care about, this is what we are here for, because I've been contacted numerous times by numerous people from, from the law enforcement, public safety side of things, to our, within our schools, to parents and whatnot, and as elected officials, it's our job. That's our job to hear from our constituents, and a lot of times, like we mentioned, when we're talking about budgets and money, we could be talking about millions of dollars, and we get eight people that show up in a room. But other issues tend to strike a nerve, and then we hear from the constituents, and really, that's what it's all about. I think it's really important that citizens, taxpayers, members of our community, reach out to their officials, tell us what you want and how you want the city run, because that's why we're elected, this is our job, and we have to take that responsibility seriously. And I think this is just a good example of, just one of a myriad that is a good example of that. So, thank you.
Counselmember Fagerly.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just to expand on the recreation program, you know, we, this last year, we didn't have any youth teams from outside of Wilmer. Atwater didn't send any teams, Olivia, Clare City, Raymond, Kirkville, New London. There's a fall league going on in Raymond right now for four weeks, it's youth, and those people heard about it, and they're excited about coming back to Wilmer-
Right.
-next year, so. Rob's in a very good position, and hopefully he can hire good people and get our program off to a great start.
Great point. Counselmember Nelson.
I will pass.
Counselor Christensen.
The asking about extra SRO, it, it's kind of an emotional issue. I mean, emotional issues sometimes can't be solved with intellect. I'd like to think more about it, but maybe, Mr. Mayor, you could refresh us on the agreement we have with the school and what it costs us versus of what it costs the school, because the taxpayers are funding both of them. Do you know offhand what that agreement says as far as dollars?
I think I do, but if I'm wrong, I'm sure that the chief, he may not be prepared any better than I am, or, or Finance Director, but the total is 117,000, which I made my comments, it's 117,000-
Plus.
-it costs to run the program for that one officer. And it costs us, as the, as the city, approximately 30... Help me.
Of the 117,000, there was approximately proposed 61,000 from the school.
Okay, 61,000 from the school, so that's-
So-
Fifty some thousand.
So we're not affected, the 117, like-
Correct.
-they had brought up. Okay, so that's-
So we would have a revenue coming in on that.
Yeah, that's still being worked on and being discussed.
So that's some more food for thought. Yeah, I, I'd like to see what Steve can do.
Right. The timeline is, is that, and Counselmember Nelson and I were in a meeting on Thursday in regards to this. I, I got some other stuff going on, I apologize.
The number of days that the school is, I mean, that, that officer is, works for the city part of the time and the school part of the time, just, I, I know we talked about those figures in the budgeting sessions, that, how much they actually work for the Wilmer Police Department and how much they're in the schools. Do you remember those figures?
And I can defer, the chief can correct me if I'm wrong, but I think it was around 170-some days that the school was in session that the school would pay for.
So then the rest of the time would be the responsibility of the city.
The city.
So it's a shared.
So, so during, like, vacations, you know, like when the school isn't in session, sometimes they'll pull them out at Christmas time, those types of things, so. So that's kind of-
It might be helpful for the council to have an understanding of how those, that whole-
Contract works.
How that contract works, because it, it, I think the figures change, if you realize the part of the school and part of the city, it's more of a community kind of effort on some of those things, so.
So, Chief, if maybe you can prepare a brief for that? Counselmember Schwantes.
Well, the budget discussion is very exciting, so don't miss out tomorrow night. We'll see you at the fire station at 6:00, and budget discussions will continue, so. Hope you can make it.
Thank you. Any else come before the order? I'm adjourned.
Second.
Most are made in second, we are adjourned. The staff and-